Good evening, everyone. This is a regular city council meeting. We're going to reconvene from the closed session to the regular city meeting. Our city attorney may have anything report from the closed session?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Call the meeting in order. Madam Clerk may have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandhu.
Here.
Councilmember Pratton.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Thank you. Next, silent prayer and flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all. Next agenda item, anything approval, addition and deletion.
Vice Mayor Sandhu, I would like to make a recommendation that we pull the parade route item to a future meeting so that other options could be considered.
Thank you. I will ask the consent from my colleagues. And before, I would like to make a comment on this agenda item. I would like to ask this staff, when they can bring back, can you make more recommendation, more path on that agenda item to the city council? All right, thank you. Sorry about that. I missed that replay statement. Madam Clerk may have a replay statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.zaccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, April 4th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, April 5th at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrocable14.
Thank you. Next agenda item G, presentation. Our city clerk, who will be giving the presentation?
Mr. Godati.
TJ, thank you.
My name is TJ Godati. I'm the City of Galt Code Enforcement Supervisor. Can you hear me now? Better. My name is TJ Godati. I'm the City of Galt Code Enforcement Supervisor. Welcome Vice Mayor, council, city staff and the community. Tonight, we're here for the code enforcement presentation, so let's begin. I'll remember my clicker today. Maybe.
On, on this side.
There we go. Thank you. So our agenda for tonight, what is code enforcement? Code enforcement process, our Galt Municipal Code, Section 8.20.110, an alternative specifically to Section K is going to be discussed tonight. What is code enforcement? This is our four kind of basic fundamentals and functions. Regardless what city, this is kind of where every code enforcement department operates out of. Enforcing zoning, enforcing building codes, enforcing health and safety, enforcing community preservation. That one right there is really kind of the broken window theory, and I'll get into that a little bit later in the presentation. Our code enforcement process. Courtesy notice, that's our first step. Administrative citation, that's our second step. That's normally 30 to 60 days in to where we're working with our community to try to get compliance. Consistency and fairness, due process. Every time we issue a notice, every time we issue a fine, we also reach out to that member that we've issued a fine or a notice to, and we try to get them to the table to work an angle of compliance. That's our ultimate goal and everybody we work with. Compliance, not disciplinary. That is our goal in the city, is always compliance. Even when we've issued fines, we always work with them to look to rescind, we work with fines too, because our ultimate goal is always compliance first. Galt Municipal Code, Section 8.20.110, this is the standard where we start. Literally probably 70, 80% of our cases start from this code, and then it can expand to the various codes we have within our chapter, expanded health and safety, state codes, federal codes, ICC codes, building codes. Public nuisance, most of our cases start from here. Our goal again is compliance when we're looking at this. Conditions set forth in sections regardless of whether the property or structure is occupied or vacant. We're currently right now working on probably about five or six locations that are currently vacant. So it really kind of runs the gamut of whether it's occupied or unoccupied. We're trying to be really consistent about how we address issues in our community. Section K, this is why we're here tonight. I had a question asked to me earlier. We've opened up approximately 185 cases this year. Out of the 185 cases we've opened up, 71 are directly related to Section K. Boats, campers, RVs, trailers on residences and driveways. So that's about 30% of our cases this year that we're dealing with that. If you're looking at some of the key points, our front yard setback, locating any side of rear yard, preventing a three-foot wide continuous fire access, that's a safety issue that we'll get into in a few slides. That's really important. We kind of want to look at that one a couple of slides from now, and I'll explain that a little bit further as we get into that slide. It's a triangular, if you look at number three, we're talking about a corner lot. There's a couple of locations in our city when it's a corner lot, we have to get with planning, sightline issues, it could end up being traffic issues with police department too. So there's multiple issues that we get involved in when we're looking at corner lots. Use of any camper, motorhome, residential occupancy, except zone for mobile homes, parks or camping. We're currently working on about six cases right now to where we have reports of people living in RVs. Even when all standards are met, even when the RV is in compliance, it's in the backyard and meets setbacks, we're still getting calls about, hey, we got somebody living back there. We're currently working, like I said, on about six cases right now throughout the city. And our goal, even in that situation, is to get to a point of compliance. Our goal is not to make people homeless, but we have to address this, we have to be consistent across the board. So we are dealing with that issue too, which is a follow-up to, you know, Section K, Section L is right there. The next 16 slides, you're going to kind of see a, yes?
Oh no, it's not queuing it.
My apologies. No, it's okay. My apologies, I'll make sure that I scan the room. Sure, I sure can. No problem. It is, it's a meat and potatoes tonight. No problem, it's okay.
TJ, do me a favor. Can you, when you speak, can you a little bit close to the microphone?
Sure. My apologies. Normally my voice is really loud, I coach football, so I don't want to be too loud and run people out of the room, so I'm trying to use my inside voice tonight, so my apologies. Section K, sir, this is really kind of why we're here. We're looking at issues from front setbacks to fire access, fire egress on the side yards, to triangular lots, to issues of people living in campers, RVs. Yes, sir?
No, no, TJ, no.
Excuse me. If you have a question, we can give you the opportunity when the public comment.
We're kind of bypassing everything while we're here.
No, we will give you every, everybody, every opportunity. Let's finish it, the, all this presentation, let's go from there. Thank you.
So I just want to jump in for a second, Vice Mayor Sandhu. This is an important part of the presentation because it really underscores the rules of where and how you can park your RV, trailer or boat. So TJ has been mentioning Section K. This is really what guides the code enforcement team as they go out and respond to complaints of illegal parking of the RVs, trailers or boats. So he's going to, TJ is going to walk you through why we do what we do, he's already done some of that. We have some photo presentations of what it looks like with trailers, RVs and boats in front yards. And then at the end of the presentation, the public will have an opportunity to speak to the topic.
So if we look at our next slide, like I said, our next 16 slides are going to really kind of give you a photo snapshot of what a lot of communities deal with. These are stock photos that we took from different jurisdictions, but these photos could have been taken in the city of Galt. Our first photo, storage of a RV camper, you know, is it secured properly? It looks like there potentially could be, you know, just a little wood block there, securing it in the driveway. Other communities right now are addressing this. City Sacramento has actually been on the news in the last 30 days, residents from the Land Park areas, you can see, code enforcement ran its code over. Currently, right now, I've reached out to multiple jurisdictions from Escalon up to Chico to get some research and identify how they're addressing their issues in their community. And once I get that, I'll have a full report for council and for our city manager as we see what other communities are doing with regards to this specific topic. See something like this, you have issues, potential issues, it's a covered camper on the driveway, but you know, parking service can be an issue in that jurisdiction. This is what we start to see in many locations, even in our city. One unit becomes two units. You know, you have a nice looking camper, then you have a storage trailer, right? Again, within this jurisdiction, there's various codes that they may be in violation of. Within our jurisdiction, that's a specific violation to our Galt Municipal Code. This one right here, the sheer size of it, then you look at possibly where the tongue is, where it's secured at, now you're looking at Chapter 9.28, which is obstruction of public right of way within our code. So sometimes as we go to a location, we end up with two or three other violations based on just the cause we go out there. So although it may not be a blighted situation, it could be an access situation, somebody with a wheelchair, you know, that can't get through. So those are things that we look at as we go out. One issue can possibly turn into multiple code violations as we get there. Sheer size of it, does somebody want to look at that? But also, we get into gross vehicle weight, Chapter 10.32. Within our city, anything over five tons, semi truck, any type of mobile truck, even an RV, if they're over five tons, you can use it to load and unload, and then you cannot use it specifically on a residential location. That gets into engineering, public works, use of residential streets. We get into this right here, is it secured properly? Wheels locked, potential setback issues with regards to the front of the home. Cinder block and wood, holding the boat up on a sloped driveway, potential safety issues. Those are things that we look at when we get called to a location. Again, our goal is always compliance. When we go out somewhere, our goal is always compliance, we want to work with our residents, can we find a solution to make this work at this location? You look at this right here on the surface, is that an approved surface? Is he impacting the property lines of his neighbor? Is that tongue possibly sticking out into the sidewalk? Again, another access issue with regards to side access from the front to the back of the home. This one I kind, you know, I don't laugh, but I look at this, the sheer size of that thing. This gets into zoning and planning, when a neighborhood is zoned and planned 10 years prior, you know, what's the use of this residential location? Was it designed to put a boat, basically a mini yacht, on my driveway? So those are things that zoning and planning look at before a neighborhood is even laid out, before streets are laid out, before code even creates the regulations to address these issues. This is kind of the big one, this is where we get into other agencies. Residential setback, egress or fire. Let me go back, my apologies guys, right here. God forbid if there was a fire in the backyard and that was the only way fire could access that. With all the apparatus and equipment, could they get through there? Again, not saying it would happen, but there's got to be that three-foot access, and that's pretty standard regionally, statewide, nationally. And that regardless of whether it's a boat, a trailer, a camper, a storage trailer. When you see a location like this, this is, this didn't happen on Tuesday and it got to this by Thursday. This is generational. And we see locations like this, it took a generation to get that way, and sometimes it takes some time to get it cleaned up. There's some neighbors in here that I know personally that were working on some locations. You have a vehicle backed up, you have a camper here, you have another camper here, you have a boat on the lawn, you have a yard car. Normally when we see stuff like this, multiple of these vehicles are boats, are campers, are not registered currently. And a lot of times when we see this, you'll see behind, you'll see garbage cans, tires, rubbish, debris, you name it, that'll be behind there, because that's being used to hide everything else going on in the front of the home. Again, not as bad as the previous one, but sometimes we'll see this right here where it's taking up the whole driveway. You know, it's secured by a block, some kid knocks that over, maybe there's stuff behind, there's setback issues, it's pushed up against the eve of the home. So now you get into, you know, housing issues, building issues, building code. I really want to stress when we go out there, it's not to be punitive, it's not to issue fines. We're looking at every location, can we create a safe location for our community? And that's our goal. When we go out there and we talk to our residents, it's not to find people, it's not to be punitive, it's can we make this work? Can we make everybody happy as we walk away? I've dealt with probably a few issues like this to where I might get a call from Public Works. And we just dealt with an issue, it wasn't an RV, but it was a work truck, we had issues with leaks going on in side yard. We were able to contain it, but Sacramento County Environmental Management Division got involved, Public Works got involved, because potentially there was fluids leaking from the vehicle onto the driveway. They've caught it, thank God, because if it gets into the gutter, then that takes to the state and federal. There's specific reporting, mandatory reporting for Public Works. So those are things that we deal with. On the surface, it goes, it's just a boat on the lawn, what's the big deal? Again, there's setback issues there within our code, that would not be allowed, even if that's within somebody's code. If that thing starts to leak, gets in the gutter, that changes everything regardless of the community. At the end of the day, 8.20.110, it covers everything from boats, campers, trailers, to non-operational vehicles, to non-registered vehicles. Because for us, a lot of times, when we go to certain locations, we have one issue, we end up with four or five issues. And this is why this code is written, and this code is pretty consistent with various codes regionally, nationally. It may not be written the same, but the goal is to reduce blight in the community. We really kind of wanted to cover this right here, blight defined. That could be subjective, but the biggest thing we want to look at is reduction of the property values of surrounding properties, undermining economic vitality of neighborhoods, creating health and safety dangers. If you look at it and go, wow, that doesn't look good in my neighborhood. Our goal is to go out and identify, is it a violation of the code? If it is, then we apply the code. If there's ways we can fix it and make it work, there's an example, two examples. We had a gentleman that reached out to us in December, had an RV, it was parked on the front lawn. He needed approximately 120 days, had family issues, ended up moving it. Had another RV and boat, neighbors that I know around the corner in the northeast area, from where I live, reached out to me. They were able to reach out to planning, because the lot, the way it was designed, they were able to get the fence moved, meet setbacks, meet all planning, meet all zoning, meet all building, where they were able to get the RVs and trailers in the back of the home that still meet setbacks. So again, in those situations, we're more than willing to work with people. We'll go out, probably too generous, I'm being honest with you. We'll go out plenty of times, say, listen, we'll work with you, we'll work with you again, we'll work with you again. I think that's the best way to operate. Our goal at the end of the day is to create issues of compliance in our community. Impact on neighbors, RV in a driveway can hurt property values. Visible RV is a negative aesthetic factor, deters potential buyers, impact the overall curb appeal in a community. Tonight, at the end of the night, these discussions are going back and forth between the community and council. Change code to allow current conditions, as long as the vehicles have current registration, operable condition, no flat tires, broken windows, this gets back to the broken window theory. This gets back to, like, all joking aside, you walk by your kid's room and it's a mess. That's the broken window theory. Clean it up, right? Realistically, right? That's kind of the goal of broken window theory, let's keep it clean, let's keep it vibrant, let's create a vibrant, clean city that we can all enjoy. And if that means we're going to work with our community to get to that point, that's what we'll do. And we've done that, I think, very effectively in our city. Keep current code as is. Provide a six-month grace period, provide a moratorium, if we go that route, to work with our community to make sure we're all in compliance.
At this point, any questions for council, city manager and staff?
TJ, thank you for giving us a detailed presentation. Before I move forward to the public comment, I will ask the city clerk, can you read the public comment statement, please?
That will go under the items not on the agenda, we can take public comment on this item.
Okay, all right. And I would like, first of all, I would like to thank you, everybody come to this meeting. And if anybody want to make any comment, please fill up the sheet and give to madam clerk. Thank you.
Ready?
Yes.
First up, we have Rich Lozano.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, city council members, city staff and community. My name is Rich Lozano, I live within the city limits of the city of Galt. I stand before you tonight to express my unwavering support for Galt Municipal Code 8.20.110, Section K, which addresses the parking and storage of boats, trailers, campers, motorhomes, unregistered or non-operable vehicles and other mobile equipment on residential properties. This ordinance is not merely a set of regulations, it is a commitment to preserving the quality of life, aesthetic appeal and property values within our community. As many of you may know, I am not one for government to tell me what to do in many cases. However, I think this is an issue of quality of life. First and foremost, the presence of improperly stored vehicles in residential areas significantly detracts from the visual harmony of our neighborhoods. Front lawns and driveways cluttered with boats, trailers and inoperative vehicles create an unsightly environment that affects all residents. Such conditions can lead to a sense of neglect and disorder, undermining the pride we take in our community's appearance. Moreover, the accumulation of abandoned or inoperative vehicles is known to promote blight and deterioration. These conditions not only attract crime, but also create fire hazards and provide harborage for rodents and insects posing risk to public health and safety. Ensuring clear and well-maintained properties essential, is essential for the well-being of our residents. From a safety perspective, obstructive access for emergency services is a grave concern. Vehicles parked inside or rear yards without maintaining a three-foot wide continuous fire access way can hinder emergency responders during critical situations. Ensuring clear pathways is not just a regulatory requirement, but a moral obligation to protect the safety of our neighbors. Additionally, the negative impact on property values cannot be overstated. The presence of improperly stored vehicles can reduce real estate values, affecting homeowners' investments and the economic stability of our community. Studies essentially show that well-maintained neighborhoods help preserve property values and encourage new families and businesses to invest in our community. Recognizing the importance of maintaining neighborhood aesthetics, the city of Galt has demonstrated its commitment to keeping our community clean and attractive by implementing a full-time litter abatement worker, which started as a pilot program and continues to be a budgeted position today. This initiative underscores the city's dedication to reducing blight, improving curb appeal and fostering a community that residents can be proud of. By complementing ordinances like 8.20.110, the proactive measures such as litter abatement, Galt is taking a comprehensive approach to enhancing quality of life and preserving property values. Our community is not alone in implementing such regulations. Many jurisdictions have established similar ordinances to maintain neighborhood standards. Sacramento County, for example, enforces regulations against the storage of unregistered or inoperative vehicles in residential areas, reinforcing the importance of community upkeep. In conclusion, this code that we're here learning about tonight is vital instrument in our collective effort to maintain a community that is safe, visually appealing and economically strong. By regulating the parking and storage of certain vehicles and equipment and reinforcing those efforts with proactive initiatives like the full-time litter abatement worker, we uphold the standards that make our neighborhood desirable places to live. Let us continue to support and enforce these regulations, ensuring that Galt remains a community we are all proud to call home. Thanks.
Thank you, Rich Lozano.
David Givens.
Apologize, I'm going to have to talk a little fast here. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for bringing this matter up for discussion. I'd also like to thank the city manager who took the time to speak with me about this issue previously. And while we have differing views on the best way to proceed here, I do appreciate his taking the time to explain his position and also listen to mine. I would like to point out, though, however, the imbalance of this process, and that after the meeting where this matter was brought to your attention, city staff received approximately a month and a half where they were able to come up with their presentation, and they had an untimed presentation given to you, whereas we are each given five minutes to come up here and express our views. So we're not, this is not a coordinated response to their presentation, this is simply us coming up here and expressing our views and our griefs. So obviously, there's people on both sides of this topic. I believe that rather than looking at this, though, from the perspective of an issue with two opposing sides, we'd be better off to work at this as a, starting from a common point, working together to determine the best course of action and where we want to go. So where is this common starting point? Well, currently, we have these laws that we just heard about that are in place that prevent us from parking RVs and boats in our driveways, but without those laws, in effect, we would in fact have the right to do so. So I think that that is our common starting point, recognizing first that we have the underlying right to use our property as we see fit. Now, council certainly has the authority and, in certain circumstances, the obligation to restrict that right when it's for the good of the community. That's what we're here to debate. Under what circumstances and to what degree should our property rights be infringed upon? But for purposes of a starting point, it's just important that we recognize the existence of those property rights. So where do we go and when is it appropriate to restrict those rights? From discussions I've had, both in person and on various social media platforms, I've found that the most common concerns are property rights, potential hazards, blight and the potential effect on property values. So let's start with public safety. Common concern I've heard is that boats and RVs block the view of sidewalks, approaching pedestrians and vehicles. While it's a valid concern, a full-size pickup or a SUV or a van, they're all legal to park in your driveway and they block your view just as much, and in many cases more, than a boat or an RV. So they're not more of a vision obscurement than other vehicles. Other safety issues such as leaking vehicles or ones in disrepair can easily be addressed in a new, can easily be addressed in a new ordinance without the need for a ban. Someone previously made a public comment. Someone previously made a public comment about potential for leaking vehicles being a hazard and a runoff going into gutters. But if that's truly a concern, having the vehicles in the driveway where the leak could be seen is actually better than leaving them in the backyards where that leak could go undetected for years. What about blight, its potential effect on property values? I still cannot find a single scientific study that was conducted on this. I've heard opinions and claims that what research shows, but the actual studies are never cited. None of those opinions have ever made mention of the cities that do allow it or how it has affected anything. I've personally spoken to both realtors and home appraisers, who have told me boats and RVs are not a known property value issue, it's just dependent upon the potential buyer's preference. We all know you can easily find an expert to give an opinion that backs up your views, but you can just as easily find an expert to oppose it. We've heard saying beauty is in the eye of the beholder, it certainly applies here as well. Some people simply do not like the look of a boat or an RV in a driveway. But others do. And I do not believe somebody else's preference for a neighborhood free of visible RVs and boats should outweigh my preferences to allow them, and in fact, my underlying right to do so. If we're to accept the notion that boats and RVs being visible decreases your property value, then requiring them to be in the backyard does nothing. They're still visible from the street, and a gate or a fence doesn't change that. So it's just simply addressing a preference. I've also heard arguments about how the law has been on the books for decades and that there's a reason for that. Well, I worked at a local police department for over thirty years, and we had a committee that would periodically review all of our general orders, make sure that they align with the needs and desires of the community as those change over time. The fact that this ordinance has been in place for thirty years is enough reason alone to warrant it being reviewed and modified as to what best serves the community today. We all know that government policies and public expectations are very different than when this ordinance was set in place. Another concern is that the ordinance were to be removed, the city would just be overrun by RVs and boats as people pull them out of storage and pile them up in their properties. At first, I don't believe that would actually happen, because there are several cities around us that don't have our restrictions, and there's no visible difference in the number of boats, RVs. And secondly, most of the boats and RVs that are currently being stored in storage, simply too big to fit in a residential driveway. I suspect there'd be very little noticeable change in the number of boats and RVs being parked in driveways. I've learned that people are resistant to change and can frequently be paralyzed by the fear of what-ifs, where they are so concerned about what could potentially happen that if they do something, that they fail to do anything at all. So let's not make that mistake. I'm not asking you to chisel an 11th commandment into stone or to alter the Constitution. We're just simply asking for some sensible changes to the ordinance, and if these unintended consequences do arise, it can be simply modified in the future. It's not that hard to change the ordinance, so I...
Sir, your time expired. Thank you.
Hello. Those are some pretty good presentations. I do want to point out on that code enforcement presentation, we had words like "could," "potentially," "perceive." Those are all emotions. There's nothing there. Maybe it could happen, maybe not, also. Also, not to attack anyone, but, you know, the first speaker also saying it's a quality of life issue, and, you know, that this could give you a sense of neglect and disorder. Again, feelings. These are your feelings and emotions, and you can have those, but they shouldn't guide the ordinance. They shouldn't guide whether or not you change the ordinance. Some of us don't have the ability, the space, to store our boats or RVs. We don't have a big enough side or backyard. And so I'm hoping you can make some exceptions by changing the ordinance to allow for us to keep our property on our property, whether it's in the back or in the front, as long as it's not leaking or some other safety issue. I mean, again, you know, it's all about emotions, and if you put those aside, there are no studies anywhere that show that it reduces or raises property values. So I would like you to keep that in mind when you decide, hopefully, to change the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Jones.
Thank you for your time on this issue. I'm here tonight to speak to you and strongly have you consider maintaining the code as is. As I am empathetic to those that have asked the city to reconsider the municipal code, however, it is in the best interest of the city to maintain the code as is. As an owner of a boat that is stored in other places other than my home, I understand the essential cost that comes with that. However, I knowingly know that and pay for that. RVs stored on the street or in the driveways, not only for, not only for bring down the value, it's an aesthetically unpealing look. And yes, that is an emotion, and I'm entitled to that emotion, that we can have that, and we want to maintain that, and I don't want to look at that. And as someone else may have mentioned, yes, vehicles and SUVs can block the view, but most boats, majority of RVs, are much larger than our SUVs or our trucks. We spoke about safety. We put them on the side yard. That is a safety. Have we considered when we put them on the side yard and the neighbor has a bunch of bushes? And now we have a place for someone to potentially hide or to lurk? In my particular neighborhood, we have many elderly people that walk in the mornings and the evenings. Yeah, again, maybe that is an emotional, but it can create an unsafe condition. I don't think that's an opinion, that's a fact. As long as having boats out front, as most of us here probably follow the Galt Facebook page, homeless has been an issue. Having a boat out front, covered, provides a place that someone could sleep or stay without the homeowner even knowing it. So how do we handle or address that? It is also not the city's right to be the judge or jury on to decide if something is nice or acceptable to be in the yard. That's why it needs to be black and white, and hence, the code for thirty years has been, "We don't allow it." And we should also remember, as many of these people have the very right, as I do, to speak tonight, there are many people that will not come forward to speak in favor of maintaining the code. And as others may also speak, that maybe they went and asked their neighbor if they're okay with it. I could only imagine a majority of people, when a neighbor comes and asks them if they are okay with their boat or RV being stored in front of their house, would probably say yes to avoid a conflict. However, they more than likely do not. And I believe our code enforcement officer can probably speak very highly to how many comments he gets from people that are calling him to have him come out because they do not want to address the issue with their neighbor or get into conflict with their neighbor. So again, I urge you to strongly consider maintaining the code as is. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith Jones.
Gail Delgado. My issues are addressed, so I am proud. David Darcheck.
I'll try to talk loud enough so I can hear myself. Could I approach the council for a minute? Because I have a photo that I'd like to show. I didn't have anything printed out, otherwise...
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I hope it doesn't go off screen. That's in front of my house, in my driveway. And I had a question for the gentleman that gave the presentation. All those photographs that we saw, were all those from Galt? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Now, I realize everything is not like this photo, and I'm sorry I can't share it with the rest of you. It's a very small utility trailer that I have in my front yard that I was sighted on, or worn down, or whatever the term is. Very small. Blocks under the tires, secure, safe as can be. I doubt if it was obstructing anybody's view, but maybe somebody drove by and said, "Hey, that guy's got a trailer, maybe we could borrow it." Or he drove by and saw somebody's boat and said, "Hey, they have a boat, too. This looks like a good neighborhood." Or, "They go RVing. Let's go RVing, because this is our kind of people." I'm not saying everybody's like that, but I don't buy into this, people don't like that. Yeah, individuals don't. But I think we have a lot more response tonight from people that have boats, have trailers, have RVs, that say, "Hey, let's make..." You know, the other part of all this? I've lived here in Galt now for a little over thirty-six years. I've had trailers, boats, small RVs. No, didn't have an RV. That was some friend of mine. Anyways, until just very recently, this never seemed to be a subject, never seemed to be a problem for the city. And all of a sudden, boom. I don't know what the... It's been on the books for thirty years or something of that nature, I'm told? Perhaps it has been. We haven't, I haven't heard anything about it prior to the last few months. I guess around the same time I got sighted for this little trailer, which my neighbors laughed at and said, "Are you kidding me?", with their boats in their front yard, which I say, "Hey, I'm glad you could afford one, I wish I could." We need to make some changes, possibly. Even in those photographs we saw, I don't recall seeing one of them, and I looked pretty closely, but I might have missed, anybody blocking the sidewalk. Now, the presentation gentleman, he did point out at one point that perhaps the ball of the trailer was sticking out, and somebody could have bumped into it. I didn't see that, but I'll take his word for it. But the rest of them, no, they weren't obstructing anything. They were sitting in somebody's driveway. Oh, the one along the side of the house, right next to the sidewalk? Yeah, I would have had an issue with that myself. But the rest of them, they're in somebody's driveway, their home, their property. I don't know if they're registered or not. Mine are, registered, operable, with the state of California. And I feel I should be able to put that on my property. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lucy Simmons.
Hi, I'm the Greenlight.
Richard Jones.
Thank you for taking the time to discuss this matter this evening. I don't have a prepared statement on the matter, but as a resident of this community, I wanted to show my support for the reform of the current ordinance. As a boat and RV owner, I have utilized the purpose-built storage facilities for these items. I've also been a victim of theft and vandalism in these facilities, which cost a substantial amount to repair. When we bought our current property, we purposely bought property large enough that we felt we could store all of our vehicles and recreational vehicles adequately. I don't think we need to have a free-for-all of park anything anywhere, but I do feel that there should be a compromise to the current ordinance to where we are allowed to store our property on our property. As I said, I don't have a prepared statement. It's about all I had to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Greg Davidson.
Good evening, council members and city staff, as well as fellow citizens of Galt. The city of Galt has an ordinance in place which prohibits parking boats and recreational vehicles in driveways, mainly due to aesthetic and safety concerns. Those can be broken down into two points. One is visual appeal. The city wishes to maintain a neat and tidy appearance. Larger vehicles, such as boats and RVs, can be considered eyesore, in my opinion. Two, property values. Allowing these vehicles to be parked in driveways could potentially decrease property values, as they may be seen as unsightly or disruptive. That's both my opinion and the opinion I've gotten from two different realtors. I understand these concerns, but I'm here to address the safety aspects of the ordinances, which are, one, obstruction of views. Large vehicles can obstruct views, creating safety hazards for pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. Some of us have seen this problem up close, far too close to be on us. It's difficult enough to deal with speeding vehicles and distracted drivers. We don't need to add obstructed views of traffic lanes to that mix. Secondly, fire access. In the event of an emergency, parked boats and RVs could block fire department access or create obstacles for firefighters. If firefighters can't effectively address a fire, it could easily spread, endangering both firefighters and neighborhoods. Three, pedestrian safety. Children playing in the neighborhood or pedestrians may not see or anticipate the presence of large vehicles, increasing the risk of accidents. I don't believe asking the city council to keep our most at-risk citizens safe is an unreal expectation. In fact, it seems it should be one of our top priorities. As a person in a wheelchair, I can tell you I have many times had my progress blocked going down the sidewalk by vehicles such as these that do go out into the sidewalk. It's worth noting that Galt's ordinances may allow for temporary parking permits or exceptions for special circumstances, such as moving or construction projects. This is an important point. I've noted several social media comments that the city is using these citations as a way to raise revenue. Or, more troubling, several commentators have accused the city of colluding with the storage companies in Galt to have large vehicles moved to storage in exchange for kickbacks from the storage companies. This is ridiculous, of course, and when asked to provide proof of these accusations, none are offered. I know how hard the council members and staff work for Galt citizens, and I find this kind of accusation to be shameful. I have lived in Galt for over thirty years, and the ordinance has been continuously in place for all that time. Owners of these vehicles should have, and indeed, may have known it was in place before purchasing these items. It seems it's only now a problem. It seems it's only now a problem, as we finally have enough code enforcement staffing to issue citations. Thank you for your attention, and thank you for allowing me to address you on this matter.
Thank you, Greg Davidson. Thank you.
Good evening. I don't really have a long prepared statement either, but I am a boat owner, and I do have a boat parked in my driveway currently. And I was actually kind of surprised when I got the letter earlier this year, saying it was in violation of the code. I wasn't aware of it, and maybe I should have been. But when I moved to Galt, I think like fifteen years ago or so, I mean, I've seen many boats in driveways, and to me, it's never really detracted from the appeal of living here. I love living in Galt, it's a great town. And I just wanted to come here and register my support for amending the code. I think we should be able to park our boats in our driveways. For me, one of the issues in parking is somewhere else, is I'm worried about theft. I did actually have eleven hundred dollars' worth of equipment stolen out of my boat last summer, and I'd like to avoid having that happen again. So, I'd prefer to keep it at my house, and just want to let you guys know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys, excuse me. Thanks for having me. All right, so leaking gray waste, obstruction of views, and dilapidated trailers. Dilapidated trailers. These are the reasons we are told why we can't have trailers, but none of the reasons apply to us responsible trailer and boat owners. With the current ordinance, you're only penalizing ninety-five percent of us that actually take care of our trailers. The definition of targeting is the act of directing or aiming something at a particular group of people. This is exactly what's being done to responsible boat and trailer owners. The fact that the government can tell you what you do with your property, and what you work so hard for, is absolutely flabbergasting. If our sidewalk is in rough condition, we are responsible to take care of that. But you get to tell us what goes by... behind our sidewalk? Where is the overreach? Just because someone thinks that trailers and driveways depreciates values, doesn't give you the right to infringe on our rights. We are not asking the world, we're just asking, please just let us keep our property on our own property. Now to solutions. I have one for you, to try to make both parties happy. Let people keep their property on their property, as long as the trailer isn't dilapidated, registered, operable, without obstructing views, and most importantly, not blocking any fire personnel. There's no reason to not revise this ordinance based on this. You were all elected to listen to the people, so let's try to make something work here. Let's not cater to these storage facilities that take advantage of people and raise the rates exponentially like they have. And also, we've heard of a lot of vandalism over there, and you can read it on Yelp, it's pretty crazy, so. So I believe we can come to some sort of solution for this problem. Life is about change, like we've seen a ton happen in Galt. Let's change this very old ordinance, and make a new, better one for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cassandra Gonzalez. I am here to voice my support for the revision of the RV and boat parking code ordinance. I believe that there needs to be a revision, because the code set in place now is too broad and targets all RV and boat owners. I mainly wanted to come up here because my brother was recently affected by these new code enforcements as well. He was told he could not park his work truck on his own driveway. I personally don't think it's right for the city to tell anyone what they can and cannot park on their driveway. There are a few concerns brought up by the city code enforcer, as to why he believes the code is important. I want to discuss the three main reasons he discussed. He stated that these types of vehicles can leak oil, as well as it causes blight in the neighborhood, and also that now the city has money to enforce these codes. I truly believe that any vehicle is capable of leaking oil on a driveway. The risk factor stands the same for cars, trucks, RVs, and boats. For creating blight to the neighborhood, I want to take into consideration that one of the highest housing markets around us is, one, Folsom, which houses are estimated to be from five hundred K to one point two million dollars. They had allowed their community members to have RVs and boats, and even work trucks parked on their driveways, as long as they're being maintained and not causing any obstructions in residential areas. For the last reason, I wanted to say that I don't think it's right that this code has been around for many years, and not once has it been enforced. Making community members feel like they were doing no wrong. Then, one day, they are told they will be fined if they do not remove these types of vehicles from their driveways. I don't think it is right for the city to choose when they get to enforce certain codes and when they don't. If it was a code, it should have been enforced from the beginning. I understand that there are some vehicles that are left to rot away in driveways, and believe that the code should be revised to target those certain cases. But beyond that, if the vehicle is well-maintained and on someone's driveway, then those community members should be left alone. That is my stance, and I hope, as a city council, you hear the community members' reasonings and work with us to revise this code. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, council. I just want to say thank you to Chris for helping me out with my situation, and working with me to come up with a temporary solution for now, for the time being, while we go through all this. I'm Cassandra's older brother. Mine was actually a work truck that I have parked on my RV space. I have an RV parking. I have the space for, you know, I could fit an RV, full-size RV in the back of my backyard. I was given a fine, or told that I had to move it, because it's over the girl's vehicle weight rating. I know that it's written the way it's written, but I think these situations should be taken as a per case. You know, each individual case should be taken into consideration. For me, my work truck is, you know, it's a mobile shop. You know, I have everything I have in there for work. I, you know, go travel Northern California, Nevada, for work, so, you know, on any given day, I'm sent out to Grass Valley, or I'm sent out to the Bay Area, and I'm everywhere. If you actually go to where I live, I live in the Coliseum, I've talked to all my neighbors, nobody had an issue with my truck being where it was. I'm parked up in my driveway, I'm about five feet away from the sidewalk if I'm parked in front of the RV space, completely behind my house if I'm parked behind my RV space, with my gay clothes. I do think it needs to be revised, and I think everything needs to be taken on a per-case basis, you know, with everybody. I just want to express that to you guys. Like I said, you know, the work truck for me is my livelihood, and that's how we feed our families, and that was the job that offered me the most money, and I could, you know, give my family a better life. And so, without the truck, I have to consider moving out of Galt, somewhere where I can park the truck, because that's just the way I make my income. So, thank you for hearing me out, and thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm not really ready, I wasn't planning on speaking, I just wanted to hear what people had to say. But there's a few things that I'd like to bring up. So you can't pick your neighbors, right? I'm a real estate broker, I don't know if I already said that, in Galt. And when I take a buyer out to look at a property, I suggest they drive the neighborhood, go there at night, go there on the weekends, see how many parties there is, you know, and just see what the neighborhood's like. My personal opinion is, if I put a listing on, I'm going to make them move the RV or the boat out of the driveway while we have it marketed. Does it affect the value of your property? I don't think it affects the value of your property, but it's going to affect the buyer pool that will buy that property, which inevitably will affect your property value. That's my opinion. So, it's just like if you have a bad yard, or the guy next to you never mows his lawn, it looks like a foreclosure, right? I'm not saying that every boat is like that. We all have boats, RVs, motorhomes, and all that. I think that possibly, I know the gentleman with the work truck, I feel that's terrible, right? Because he's probably a heavy diesel mechanic, or something like that, and that is his everyday vehicle. So, there seems like there should be something for that. But there's HOAs and CCRs, mostly CCRs in every neighborhood, and you probably don't even know it. They're so old that nobody pays attention to it. So there's probably things that are in there that you don't even know, that you're not supposed to be doing now, anyway. I don't know what that point is supposed to be about, but there is rules that you don't even know about. So maybe there's a size, or a height, regulation, right? Maybe we take care of it that way. I wouldn't want some big motorhome right next to my house, so I couldn't see out, you know, personal opinion, and whatever they said, that's a feeling. I don't know how you could regulate that, though. It has to be black and white. If it's not black and white, then that's somebody's opinion, and my opinion is obviously different from other people's. What do you think's nice? What do I think's nice? You know, I think a classic, old kind of boat that's nice is nice. Maybe somebody needs that hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar ski boat. Something like that. So, you know, it's relevant. I feel like if we open this can, it's going to be a big old can that comes out, and is going to be a problem, but I don't have the solution, because I'm not up there. But I think, that's just my opinion. I can't even read my own writing, because I don't have my glasses. So what if you did something like, you have seventy-two hours, or maybe there already is that? You know, people want to go camping, or go take their RV out, and it takes them a couple days to get that thing ready for a trip. Are they not supposed to be able to park it in the road for a couple of days to get it ready? The guy that works, I think he should be able to take his truck back and forth every day, because that's what he does. I don't know. So, maybe a height restriction? I know there's a weight restriction, but I think it's got to be a little bit different, possibly, so I don't know if that helps or not. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, and thank you for listening to all of us as we go through speeches. None of us are public speakers, so I'm sure that this is a lesson in learning for all of us. But I did want to address a number of the things that I heard tonight, that I thought were interesting. So, first of all, I heard a number of things about blight, and rats, and things that are attracted by the different things that we hold in our driveways. I would like to point out that I have never seen a rat that knew the difference between my backyard or my front yard. So, if that's the concern, I don't think that it'll matter which place it is in, we're going to have the same issues. I think the bigger issue is whether or not that should be allowed on any part of the property, which it looks like the new alternative revision wouldn't permit that, anyway. Same thing with the issues of the blight. If we're looking at the alternative, the alternative doesn't allow for that. So the concern that we keep hearing about the blight, the blight, the blight, would be negated by the alternative, anyway. The only thing that the alternative gives us, is the ability to have well-maintained, well-groomed, within proper egress, and properly, structurally, sound vehicles. Most of the images presented were of things that, again, wouldn't have been permitted in the alternative. If you're looking at things held up by a cement block, that wouldn't be permitted. So the things that we were stating that we're concerned about, are still not permitted within that alternative. So I feel as though, if we could look at the alternative, that still gives the homeowners somewhere to place their belongings, within egress, without concern for fire, within a visible acceptance of city views. And I will say that I've heard a lot today about people being concerned about people wanting to live in this area. I will tell you, I'm a brand-new homeowner. Just bought my first home in Galt. So thrilled. We are learning the difficulties in owning a new home. But one of the things that we looked at when we bought this house, was the fact that you allowed RVs. That actually was a plus for us. It was something that we could look at, that I can afford as a homeowner, because I could keep my RV here. We actually run events on the weekends, and my RV goes to those events, stays for two months at that event, and then comes home. Now, my ability to park the RV allows us to do our work. Without my RV, I literally can't do my job. You're talking about trailers and the truck. My neighbors have a trailer that they use for their work every day. My other neighbors have a trailer that they use for their work. Is work not a justifiable reason to be able to have something on my property? Not everyone has the ability to use their backyard. That's just not feasible. I have a garage that is separate from my house. I physically can't get anything in my backyard. I bought my house because my front driveway is a hundred-and-ten feet. I can guarantee you, when my RV parks on there, it is not a hundred-and-ten feet long, we are not blocking any part of the sidewalk. But that seems like something that could be a very easy addition into the alternative of a specific egress. If we're allowing an egress on the side, and the side of the house, just for fire safety, why can't we allow an egress for the sidewalk? Would that not solve that same solution, without fear of people being able to walk down the streets? That seems like a very simple solution. So, I had a whole bunch of notes, of which I looked at none of them. Hopefully, I addressed most of what I put down here, but thank you so much for your time, and listening to all of us.
Thank you. Thank you.
No more public comment?
Anybody else want to make a public comment? Please fill up the sheet, or just come to the front and state your name.
Good evening, council. Jeff Hood, Bernal Road, Galt. Resident of thirty-two years, if it matters. Probably not. Anyway, just addressing some of the comments, I agree with a bunch of them, I disagree with a bunch of them, but in the end, I would like to see the ordinance remain in place. Some of the things, if you are looking at changing, I think there's a bunch of changes that we can make. Trailers, if we can allow, make sure we can allow cattle trailers in driveways. I want to be able to store cattle trailers, livestock trailers in my driveway would be a great thing. Also, since the same code addresses storing your garbage cans outside, I want to keep my garbage cans outside at all times, and I promise you that I will wax them, and I will wash them really, really well, they will not smell. But I want to keep them outside. And the code also addresses operating a for-profit auto repair business, and it forbids that. So I want to change people's oil in my driveway. I want to do that as a job. It'd be my retirement gig. I'm pretty good at changing oil. Not very much else when it comes to cars. You can, I don't know if you trust me to change your brakes, I've done it, but I wouldn't trust me to do it. So, there's a whole bunch of exceptions that we can make here. I think, I actually have room in the driveway, I could probably start renting driveway space to people with trailers and RVs. But those are some of the exceptions. I think that if we're going to start making exceptions to the code, I think we should just scrap the whole thing, and we could start all over, or we can continue to keep the ordinance that has served the city well for thirty years. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Tina, no more comments?
No more comments.
All right. Any council member want to make a comment on this presentation? If he's not, then, first of all, I would like to thank you, everyone, coming this meeting. I would also like to thank you, everybody, make the comment. All the comment, even some are on sport, some are not, is very important for me, I believe very important for all other council members. And I will ask the city manager, bring this agenda, like in this topic, in the next meeting as an agenda item, whenever he get a chance. The copper region, one thing, every council member have a chance to review this. This is a big decision. And then also, we are here only for one mayor is not here, as a respect. I would like to make a decision, all five of us make a decision, we can go, whatever just, or no, whatever we can change. I will ask the city manager if he's agreed to bring this as an agenda item in future.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Sandhu. That really was the intent of the presentation. The idea was to get, you know, the idea of code enforcement, the code and... The idea was to get, you know, the idea of code enforcement, the code in front of you and in front of the public, and give an opportunity for the public to offer their opinion, but then also look to council for direction on what you would like us to do next. And so if the next step is to come back to you with options, we can do that.
Thank you. And before we move to the next agenda item, I would like to ask TJ, if you can come to the podium, I have a couple of question on this agenda item. TJ, you know this ordinance in this city from long time, and you are longtime residents, and especially from last six year, I'm on a council. This is the first time the people came over there, our citizen came over there for this issue. We don't change anything on the ordinance. It's the same ordinance. What your opinion, what recently happened? And the other thing is, just, I know when you go over there or staff go over the, how we issue a citation, can you might be brief to the public, how we get the complaint, how we cite a violation on any, on the property?
Sure. So I'll start with the first part with regards to Galt Municipal Code 8.20.110. I'll go back to, it's really the foundation of how we operate. It starts, most of our codes, as I told you earlier, it could go into building codes, zoning codes, health and safety, Chapter 1792.03, state to where we get into substandard housing, to where we get into hoarding. We have to have a baseline. And, you know, some of the comments tonight, you know, with, you're impacting us, but there has to be a baseline. And for us and for most communities, a baseline to reduce blight starts to what the cities identified 25, 30 years ago. This code's been in place since 1998. There were some appeals, some changes made, and I want to say 2006, 2008, but it's been a standard code for 26 years now, excuse me, almost 27 years. So with regards to that, it's been a pretty standard code. We've been able to start to go out and take a look at neighborhoods. We just added staff last fall, and there was a question brought up, like, well, when we're in an area and we got a call for, you know, maybe somebody's boat or trailer, and we show up and then, you know, hey, what about my neighbor around the street? What about that neighbor? I always joke, it's like, you know, when your little son gets in trouble, he says, well, sister did it too. So we can, sometimes we'll deal with that in the neighborhood and say, you know what, we're in the area right now, the concerns that you've brought up, we'll go take a look at it. And as proactive as we are, Paul, to get into the second part of your question, our goal is always compliance. We've rescinded fines for people. We've worked payment plans out for people with finance. I'll call finance, say, listen, this is where they're at, they're limited resources. We'll work with them to create a payment plan. We'll get them at compliance and we'll rescind the fines. Again, at the end of the day, our goal is compliance. It's not to drive revenue. It's not to put money in the bank of the city. It's to create a, really an aesthetic, beautiful, vibrant, clean city. And that's the goal, where there's code enforcement, law enforcement, public works, other agencies. I work with literally every agency, with every department within the city. We constantly working together to really do that for our community. And that's our goal at the end of the day, is to work for you guys and help create a safe, clean city. And sometimes there's some bumps in the road, like there are right now, but at the end of the day, we're going to come to a solution that, you know, hopefully everybody will be happy with. But at the end of the day, it's for the community to create a great-looking city.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the explanation.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to add that the, you know, the current approach to code enforcement is no different than past practices with code enforcement. We do not drive the city looking for trailers, boats or RVs. TJ did mention, when we get a complaint and the officer goes and investigates the property, you know, if they do, even if the neighbor or the person we're responding to doesn't, you know, rat out their neighbor, but they see a trailer and a property two doors down, they are going to address that one. But they are not going around the city looking for boats, RVs and trailers in driveways. It is still 95% complaint-based.
Thank you, city manager. Thank you for explanation. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And thank you for everybody come here for, especially to do this presentation. Thank you, everybody. We can move to the next.
Vice Mayor, one thing. Can I add to the recommendation for the city manager?
Yeah, sure.
When they come back, can we also ask TJ or the city manager to look into our neighboring cities, to see what the other regulations are in, obviously, Lodi to the south and Elk Grove to the north?
Thank you.
Will do.
Thank you.
Is public comment already, or if you want to, very quick? If you want to, very quick, come to the podium and say, please.
I'm sorry, public comment on this matter has closed. If you'd like to make a further communication, you can submit it to the clerk for distribution to the council. Thank you.
Cody, you can make the public comment after the next agenda item. Madam Clerk, next agenda item is public comment. Can you read the statement, please?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. And we have Ken Lee.
Good evening, council members. I'd like to acknowledge the flea market staff. You know, they keep the grounds clean during the operation hours of the trash, tossed boxes, spills. The grounds are clear in the parking lot now. You don't have bags flying around like they used to, so apparently they must be taking care of it during the day. I don't think the residents have the garbage and bags in their yards anymore like they used to. The restrooms are well-kept and clean throughout the day, but changes, for betterment of the market, Tuesday and Wednesdays, maybe you can have shuttle buses for the seniors and the Hispanic elderly. That way, they don't have to depend on their kids to drive them there. And it would boost the sales at the market. I noticed the women's restrooms, the lines are getting very long, 20 of them in the line. Maybe you can install some portable toilets outside. You know, it shouldn't be that long, 20 people in line. Basically, the vendors don't park in the vendor's lot because the trucks get hit for the batteries and they get graffitied. So maybe the vendor's parking lot could be fenced and they could be locked and nobody can get access during the day. And you would find more vendors would park there instead of in the customer parking lot. You got about 70 vendors parking out on the customer's lot every day. And that take, that's equal to 400 parking space lost during the day. And I also like to acknowledge the public works for the immediate attention they gave for the uneven sidewalks on C Street. They leveled them all off now and you can easily go down with a card or a walker and not get caught up in it. But the next blocks that need to be fixed and leveled are the sidewalk brickwork on Lincoln Way between C and A Street. All they have to do is put more sand and readjust the bricks that have settled, and that way, people can walk down it freely. The flashing pedestrian crosswalk lights on C Street and on Fourth Street are a big help. It's easier to get across now. Not all cars stop, but it's, but it's a little help. And basically, at the flea market, can the small spaces at the north fence by the Veterans Park be used for nonprofits? This way, they can do public awareness of their groups and maybe we can allow the kids during summer to make some funds for the baseball teams and the Boy Scouts and everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken Lee.
No more public comment.
Thank you. Next agenda item is report by city council members on regional board, commission and committee.
All right. I attended the Sacramento Air Quality Management District Committee. This was March 27th. Was not a whole lot on the agenda. We discussed a few SB 88, AB 2449, AB 2302, air quality situations. So not a lot to speak about here. If anybody's interested in these subjects, they're certainly welcome to contact me and go over. That's it.
Thank you.
I have nothing that I attended between now and the last council meeting. The only thing that's coming up is tomorrow, we have our Groundwater Association meeting where Mr. Griffin will be giving a presentation on the City of Galt's interaction with the water that we take out of the ground.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, I attended the SECOG meeting on March 20th. It was interesting, it was held in Rockland as a member of SECOG. I did not, I was not able to attend the pre-meeting, which was a tour of their city, but I heard a lot of great feedback. Other cities were, said they had ideas, it gave them some ideas and gave Rockland some ideas of things that worked for them. But at the meeting, we went through the normal things that we're going through with the city right now, budgeting, having hearings on vacancies and things like that. The, again, I'm, I am a vote of one out of, I don't know, there's 20 members, 30 members. So they did make the official decision on which entities or which programs were going to receive funding. Galt, we had submitted one late last year, a project, and we did not receive funding. We are third on the backup list. But those receiving funding were the City of Sacramento, they are going to do a big project on their, on North Gate Boulevard, which is, they've committed $1.9 million to them. The City of West Sacramento is doing sidewalks and transportation equity program. They are getting full funding, full ask of $2 million. Sacramento County for the Whitney Avenue Road Diet, they are going to be partially funded. They'd ask for $1 million and will be receiving $452,000 to go toward theirs. And Yellow County, at the 128 and 505 interchange, they'll be receiving a partial funding and will be receiving $369,000. And the only reason why I bore you with all this is, you know, I think the City of Galt, we tried, but I think, listening to the presentations and reading those who received the funding, I think we need to maybe game plan a little bit earlier and, and try to, what seemed to sell was the public engagement. And so maybe we look into reaching out to the public and see what they think, you know, give them a parameter of what these projects are, it could look like, and maybe get some community engagement and, you know, maybe we get some other thoughts in there with what the city needs. You know, we're starting to become a little bit more out of the car mobile in our city as developments are growing up or connecting things. And so people may be more inclined to be out riding bikes or, you know, whatever those motorized bikes are now that go 40 miles an hour without a helmet. But we just might be able to get a little bit more engagement with SECOG. So other than that, listening to, Rockland was able to give a presentation, which included the president of Sierra College, which is in their jurisdiction, or which is in Rockland. And it was, it was pretty interesting to hear the changes that the city went through over the last 20 years. They were smaller than us, and within 20 years, they're now at 75,000. I don't want, I don't think Galt will even have a chance to do that, but some of the moves that they made were good examples, and some of the moves they made were not so good. So, but something for all to learn from. But I just will say, for councils' understanding, that they are still at-large voting at 75,000. That's it.
Thank you. Myself, nothing to report tonight. Next agenda item J. Information consent calendar. It is recommended that item 1 through 5 be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion and action is requested by a council member. Council, anybody want to pull any item on a consent from 1 through 5? If there's nobody pull, and before we move forward, I just have a question, not, I don't want to pull the item, item number four, Annual 2030 Galt General Plan. This will be city man, oh, maybe. Amy, on the, the report, page 12, Table 3, 2021, 2029 Regional Housing Needs. Can you might give me a brief on that?
Page 12.
Yeah, page.
Table 3?
Yes.
This is the allocation of our regional housing needs.
Yes.
The numbers that we are essentially, have been included as part of our housing element.
Yeah, the my concern, just not a concern, but just as a, because if you see very low, we're supposed to be with the 2022 to 2029 should be a 404 and low 443. We already on 25. We don't have, no houses built. Do we have any plan or just?
You're specifically speaking about the low-income?
Yeah.
Component?
The first two.
Not that we are aware of. You know, typically what happens is we have to zone property for the densities that are required by HCD. And so that's the way that our housing element, basically, we go through and rezone the H-E-K item, which was the rezone of the R4A density, that was a requirement of our housing element. And so the zoning has to be available for those units. We do have funding that we have set aside for affordable projects that we can use to incentivize affordable projects if there's a developer who is interested in putting together an affordable project.
All right, thank you. So there is no developer came or?
No, there's nothing.
All right, thank you. That's just funny.
A lot of times, they are tax credit projects, so there's, it's a competitive process they have to go through in order to receive tax credits for the affordable projects. We have a small amount of funding, but it's not a significant component to incentivize some of the affordable projects.
All right, thank you. Item 1, receive and file warrant for period ending March 2025. Number 2, minutes of regular meeting of March 18, 2025. Number 3, amendment number 1 to Kim Lee Horn Agreement for Consultant Services, Simmon Horn Commercial Traffic Study. Item number 4, Annual 2030 Galt General Plan and Housing Element Progress Report for 2024, exempt from CEQA under Government Code 65400. exempt from CEQA under Government Code 65400. Number 5, adopt ordinance adding section 2.50.005 to chapter 2.50 of the Galt Municipal Code establishing by district election, defining district boundaries and schedule election within the district. May I, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Can I ask one question about one of them before we do that? For number 3, I just had a question about us adding the additional funds to that contract. So we originally, we originally executed a contract for $70,000 for the planning of this traffic, and now we're asking to amend and appropriate another $40,000.
Oh, Mr. Reed, you don't want to pull the item. You just want a clarification with the staff.
Yes, yes, sir. We, we're now being asked to appropriate another $40,000 with a $10,000 contingency. So that's almost, I mean, it's close to doubling the original contract. So I was just wondering why the drastic change in, from the initial scope of work and contract.
Good evening, Councilmember Reed. The amendment before you is all part of a traffic study for the larger Simmon commercial project. There's been a number of changes since the initial, the consultant started work on the traffic study analysis, and those changes have necessitated some additional work for the traffic study. Those, the, because of these changes, the developer's going to be reimbursing the city all of our costs for this amendment.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as read.
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilmember Rodriguez, second by Councilmember Pratton. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion passes to 4-0. Thank you. Next agenda item is schedule matter of public hearing.
Then this evening.
Okay, next agenda item L, regular calendar parks and recreation department. L1, we already moved to the next gen, the next meeting. So next agenda item number 2, subject ordinance amending section 9.31.2A relating to insurance requirement to specific events. Mr. Solis.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council. Tonight before you, I will be giving you an update on a, on a ordinance 9.38. In 2005, the City of Galt adopted an ordinance number 2005-05, adding chapter 9.38 of the Galt Municipal Code establishing for special events. Within this chapter, the insurance was, levels were set at $1 million under section 9.38.120A1. That was set by our GPA at the time. Since the minimum insurance coverage amounts changed, this ordinance would allow the coverages set by the city's GPA to change without having to repeal and replace the city ordinance each time. Currently, the, the, or this, levels are set at 2 million and 4 million, going up from 1 to 2. So having to change this ordinance, this will take care of it, allowing the JPA to set those, those rates, or those levels, excuse me. So what we're asking you to do is waive the first reading by title only and introduce the ordinance to repeal and replace section 9.38120A1 of the City of Galt Municipal Code. And I'd like, I'd answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I needed to add one thing. Councilmember Rodriguez caught that we, something was clipped off of one of the sentences. In front of you is the new staff report with added language.
And I would just like you to know that, that was not a prob, not a mistake from the Parks and Rec Department, but mine. So I messed that up. My apologies.
Thank you. Councilmember, any comment on this agenda item?
So this would take the insurance that they have to get, the coverage from 1 million to 2 million, or it would eliminate the 1 million altogether?
What it would do is it would state that the, the levels would be set by the JPA, the City of Galt's JPA. So whatever that standard would be, since this was established in 2005, it's gone from 1 to 2. So if they change it next year or in 10 years from now, it would just be whatever level they set it at.
Thank you. Any other council member want a comment? Any public comment on this agenda item?
No public comment.
All right, thank you. If there's no public comment, I was looking to have a motion to approve this item L2.
All right, I'll move.
I'll second that.
It's moved by Councilmember, Councilmember Reed, second by Pratton. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion passes by 4-0. Thank you. Any communication, Madam Clerk?
None this evening.
City Clerk's report?
None this evening.
Comments by staff?
Yes, Parks and Rec Director Armando Solis has a comment.
I'd like to thank our Commission on Aging. They recently donated 24 chairs to our fitness program. Our Commission on Aging gets donations through grants, and they've decided to purchase 24 chairs to our fitness program, so I want to thank them for that. I also want to remind council that we have our Saturday Market this Saturday. It's probably going to be our biggest, most popular event with the Touch a Truck, and the chief of police will be there, so if you want to come out and touch a truck or see the chief, please come out and see him. Weather is per, the weather is supposed to be 71 degrees, so thankfully, the rain has stopped. Thank you.
And Community Development Director, Amy Mendez?
Good evening. Just to follow up on the events with regard to upcoming items that we have been advertising, the Shred Event is going to be happening on Saturday, April the 12th. That is from 7:30 to 11:30 at the Galt Market Grounds. We also have the Hazardous Waste and E-Waste Event coming up in May. That is going to be on Saturday, May 17th, and that is, I believe it starts at 8:30 a.m., but reservations are required, so that link is on our website if you are interested or know anybody that's interested. Lastly, last week, I attended the International Council of Shopping Centers Trade Show, which is in Monterey. It is the Northern California Trade Show for the largest retail organization, which is ICSC, and I had meetings with probably 15, 20 different restaurant users, fast food users, retailers. It is a very fast-paced couple of days, but some really great meetings, and I think will hopefully lead to some new locations in the Galt Ranch area when that develops. And I did confirm with Grocery Outlet, I met with them while I was there, they have secured a lease for the space at the former Rite Aid location, and so that's who will be locating there. It is going to be a while. Sounds like they take ownership of the property. Their preferred developer takes ownership on January 1st, and so that's when they will start all of the tenant improvement, build out on the space, add their signage. But we will be working with them. A conditional use permit is required, so we'll be bringing that to Planning Commission and processing their building plans, so they're ready to go on January 1st. So that is confirmed as the new tenant. That's all I have.
And I have a couple of comments. One is, we are interviewing for Community Development Director next week. We hope to make selection by the end of the month, and we did hire a new finance director. The finance, the new finance director is anticipated to start April 28th, and her name is Penny Buckman. She comes to us from the City of Sacramento and has a wealth of finance experience, so we're very excited that she'll be on board. She's not working yet, but she is in the audience, back in the right-hand corner, waving hello. So we're real excited to have her on board. I think she'll make a great addition to the team, and that's all the comments I have.
Thank you. Comments by councilmember and future agenda? Councilmember Pratton?
Nothing from me.
Councilmember Reed?
Well, most of them left already, but I just wanted to say thank to all the, the community members that actually came out and gave us their opinions. It's just, every once in a while, we get that amount of feedback from the community, and that's what we like, that's what we strive for, is to get their opinions on things, and they just seem to show up when they're really passionate about something. So it was nice to see that happening today. I wish it happened every meeting, but I'll take it when I can get it. Other than that, thank the staff for all their great work. I know I've been talking back and forth with Director Griffin about the composting. Don't forget about the composting on the weekends, that's right here behind us. Every week, more and more and more shows up. So come, get your six buckets of compost and take it back and put it on your plants. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
I want to echo Tim's response, comments about those who came and gave comments. Both sides had valid points, and I'm glad to hear them. I also appreciate all of the emails and phone calls and stops in each aisle at Walmart, but it's good to hear from people and, and, and hear their views on what should and shouldn't, what we should and shouldn't do. I do also want to thank staff. I always feel really bad right before council because I feel like I email and bother everyone so much. So I do really want to appreciate, or share my appreciation for what staff does, and even if it's just having to deal with me. So please don't let that scare you, Penny, and welcome to the, to the community. Galt is great. It really, really is. It's a, it's a good place to be. Other than that, I think I'm, I think I'm good.
Thank you. Myself, I'm going to be very short. Thank you for staff, always give us a very good report. Thank you for everyone working hard. Thank you for the public comment. This public comment is very important. Both side, we heard, and very important, we can take very seriously. Thank you for the media, they was here, they can be out there. Also, thank you for anybody, even don't make a public comment, come to this meeting, sitting down for a couple hours. And the only thing, I attend a public safety meeting, I attend with Councilmember Reed, and there is a only thing I would like to report to the staff regarding that a deer road closure request. I think there was a public comment was in the meeting, and we see that the committee make a decision was supporting this staff. We see the report from Public Work Department, we see the report from the Police Department and Fire Department. So they are not supporting to close that road. The other thing, you know, the Councilmember Reed, he bring some kind of safety, helmet safety at the school, but I chief already proactive on that, and he will take some kind of proactive action on that. If anybody have any question at the last minute? If he's not, then I'm going to adjourn that meeting 7:54. Thank you. Have a good night.